Well, you supposedly.
My ex-husband watches it on YouTube.
You can go to YouTube and get it.
I don't know.
Do tell me. So, Brent's here, he's in his 2020s. They're talking about. Says you can't discuss anything. So I better take that part out. Could be.
Oh, just. Yeah, I freeze on the main floor. I have a two-story, three-story and a half house. I have to wear a sweater and jeans on the main floor to keep it cool enough upstairs so I can sleep at night. Oh, you're lucky. The sober people?
You're supposed to be asleep?
Uh, my neighbor behind.
Oh, so I see it in the surrounding area.
Well, my, no, 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 the, they were acting, the sober people were acting up. So, the people, the young couple behind me, they shot, the sober people shot off fireworks, okay, which disturbed their family. So now, this guy behind me has light that sometimes so bright, I swear to God, he could land an airplane there. And he has it shining directly into the sober house.
Not only where they shoot up fireworks, he's got some ornamental grass trees that shade them. Let me slide him up a little. Just put him up in the sober house.
So he had words, and he shines a light in there now. So they've been pretty quiet ever since the neighbor had his, uh, deal with him.
Love you too.
Brax is looking forward to helping us.
I'm looking forward to putting him in charge of the whole thing at this point. Spending the day walking rush hour.
See how he does.
So is he helping you though?
Nope. There's nothing for him to do.
Don't you guys ever set up picnic tables and stuff?
Um, we'll do a little bit of that, but we have, um, let's hope to see if that's.
I don't know.
They're, they're helping.
I know.
Linda Clark, 306 South Second Avenue. And I took advantage of the open house for the Marshall County Historic Courthouse that we have. And I was pleased to make it clear to the top of the bell tower and got some really awesome pictures from the inside looking out. And everything that has been done in that courthouse is very well done. I am so pleased that we have that historic courthouse that was saved from the wrecking ball when we lost the post office to make the bank. And so everybody knows there at the courthouse how much I appreciate all of them. And since she was bragging so much, I felt I needed to brag on our courthouse. Moving on to reports, we have the 2022 Police Department Annual Report.
Good evening, Mike Tupper, Marshalltown Police Department. So I only have about an hour. No, I'm just kidding. I handed one of these out to everybody tonight before the meeting. Tomorrow morning, we'll post this on the city website. I'm not going to regurgitate everything that's in the report. I do want to say that, first of all, this was a, every year, it's a, it's a big undertaking to put this report together. And I want to thank Anna Vaughn for all the work that she did to, to make this happen. And our department leadership team works very hard to try to pull this information together so we can give you a report that's concise, but also tells the story of the past year. We answered almost 28,000 calls for service last year, so it was another very busy year. Our police department has dealt with a few challenges over the last year, but they continue to be up to the challenge. And they work very hard. I'm very proud of the men and women serving in the police department, not just the sworn police officers, but our civilian staff. They all do a very good job. We have a very good police department here. There's a few things that I would like to highlight. Recruitment and retention of police employees, it's a big challenge. Every police department in this country is hiring police officers right now. And we're competing with a lot of agencies in Iowa for a very limited applicant pool. It's a shallow pool right now. And when I start hearing my peers in cities like Ankeny and West Des Moines and Dubuque and Iowa City complain about the applicant pool and how difficult it is to maintain their staffing, you know it's a difficult challenge that many agencies are facing. So we're going to continue to do everything that we can to make sure that we're recruiting the best and keeping people here once they're here. So it's something that we're working on. Building strong relationships in our community continues to be priority number one every day for our police department. We can't be everywhere at once. At any given time, I have five police officers in, in uniform patrolling the streets of Marshalltown. They cannot be everywhere at once, and we need to have the public's active engagement in law enforcement in this community so we can keep the community safe. And it's all about building relationships and trust and transparency. And I think we've done a pretty good job of that over the 12 years that I've been your police chief. But that job never ends, and we need to continue to work on that. Budget challenges for the police department, same thing that you face every, every day in your role as city council members. And budget impacts, the first two things I just brought up, right? People, we have a pretty good citizens' police academy. We've talked about that before. You want to know what my budget is for that academy? It's zero. I don't have a budget for that academy, and somehow we make it work. We have zero dollars budgeted for community outreach, but we try to find a way to make it work. Budgeting is going to impact salary discussions that we have when we do contract negotiations later this year with police officers. So it's a big challenge for us. One thing that I do want to highlight is we have a safe community here. We don't have a lot of violent crime in Marshalltown, and we're proud of that. And when the violent crime does occur, your police officers and detectives work very fast and very hard to resolve those crimes quickly. I think we have a demonstrated history of doing that. We do have too much property crime in this community. And so this past, or earlier this year, we talked about Leeds Online, or even last year, the last part of last year, we started talking about that. Leeds Online is a tool that we're going to use to help us with property crime. But we do have too much property crime in this community, and a lot of it is related to drug crime. So every community in Iowa, every community in the United States has a drug problem. It's not just Marshalltown. But that drug problem drives a lot of criminal activity that we see. So people steal to try to get a little money so they can go out and buy drugs. So we need to find ways to work with the community to address these issues. And it's going to take a multidisciplinary approach to address the problems of addiction and homelessness and mental health in our community. And we've started to do that with Impact, that's a good first step. But we're going to have to find a way to be more proactive.
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Approve the minutes for the July 10th, 2023 meeting and the bill list in the amount of $2,357,626.40. Approve liquor license renewals for Casey's General Store 3508 at 108 Iowa Avenue West with ownership updates. Casey's General Store number 1564 at 1009 West Lincoln Way with ownership updates. Legends American Grill at 2902 South Center Street. Resolution 2023-146, approving a grant amendment to the Fisher Governor Foundation for the Iowa Great Places Grant. Resolution 2023-147, setting public hearing regarding an inter-local grant agreement for the Burn Justice Assistance Grant Program for the amount of $15,923, split evenly with Marshall County to assist with law enforcement programming or equipment purchases, notifying the public of the grant award and proposed use of federal funds. Resolution 2023-148, ordering construction for the Kiwanis Park Improvement Project, number PRK22003, setting public hearing on proposed plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost and directing publication of notice to bidders. Resolution 2023-149, calling a special election on the proposed ordinance amendment, increasing a franchise fee under the city's gas utility franchise with Interstate Power and Light Company. Resolution 2023-150, calling a special election on proposed ordinance amendment, increasing a franchise fee under the city's electric utility franchise with Interstate Power and Light Company. Resolution 2023-151, calling a special election on proposed ordinance granting consumers energies cooperative and non-exclusive electric utility franchise and establishing a franchise fee. Resolution 2023-152, authorizing the use of council-designated local option sales tax for the system information and event monitoring protection. Resolution 2023-153, approving the city fee schedule change for electrical connection fee. And resolution 2023-154, approving contract change order number three for the Coliseum Generator Edition Project, number COL22001.
Thank you. Moving on to reports, we have the 2022 Police Department Annual Report. Chief Tupper.
Good evening, Mike Tupper, Marshalltown Police Department. So I only have about an hour. No, I'm just kidding. So I handed one of these out to everybody tonight, uh, before the meeting. Uh, tomorrow morning, uh, we'll, uh, post this on the city website. Um, I'm not going to regurgitate everything that's in the report. Um, I do want to say that, first of all, this was a, uh, every year, it's a, it's a big undertaking to put this report together, Alicia remembers. And I want to thank Anna Vaughn for all the work that she did to, to make this happen. And our, our department leadership team, um, works very hard to try to pull this information together so we can, uh, give you a report that's concise, but also tells the story of, uh, of the past year. Uh, we answered almost 28,000 calls for service last year, so it was another very busy year. Um, our police department, uh, has dealt with a few challenges over the last year, uh, but they're, they continue to be up to the challenge and they work very hard. I'm very proud of the men and women serving in the police department, um, not just the sworn police officers, but our civilian staff. They all do a very good job. We have a very good police department here. Um, there's a, a few things that I would like to highlight. Um, recruitment and retention of, uh, police employees, it's a big challenge. Every police department in this country is hiring police officers right now. And we're competing with a lot of agencies in Iowa for a very limited applicant pool. It's a shallow pool right now. And, uh, uh, when I start, uh, hearing my peers in cities like Ankeny and West Des Moines and Dubuque and Iowa City, um, complain about the applicant pool and how difficult it is to maintain their staffing, um, you know it's a difficult challenge that, that many agencies are facing. So, um, we're going to continue to, to do everything that we can, uh, to make sure that we're recruiting the best and, and keeping people here once they're here. So, um, it's, it's something that we're working on. Um, building strong relationships in our community continues to be, uh, priority number one every day for our police department. Uh, we can't be everywhere at once. At any given time, I have five police officers in, in, uh, uniform patrolling the streets of Marshalltown. They cannot be everywhere at once and we need to have the public's, uh, active engagement in, um, law enforcement in this community so we can keep the community safe. And, uh, it, it's all about building relationships and, and trust and, uh, transparency. And I think we've done a pretty good job of that over the 12 years that I've been your police chief. Um, but that, that job never ends and, uh, we need to continue to work on that. Uh, budget challenges for the police department, same thing that you face every, every, uh, day in your role as city council members. Um, and budget impacts, the first two things I just brought up, right? Um, people, we have a pretty good citizens' police academy. We've talked about that before. You want to know what my budget is for that academy? It's zero. I don't have a budget for that academy and somehow we make it work. Uh, we have, uh, zero dollars budgeted for community outreach, but we try to find a way to make it work. Um, budgeting, uh, is going to impact salary discussions that we have when we do contract negotiations later this year with police officers. So, uh, it's a big challenge for us. Um, one thing that I do want to, uh, highlight is we have a safe community here. We don't have a lot of violent crime in Marshalltown and we're proud of that. And when the violent crime does occur, uh, your, uh, police officers and detectives work very fast and very hard to resolve those crimes quickly. I think we've, uh, uh, have a demonstrated history of doing that. Um, we do have too much property crime in this community. And so this past, or earlier this year, we talked about Leeds Online, or even last year, uh, the last part of last year, we started talking about that. Um, Leeds Online is a tool that we're going to use to help us with property crime. Um, but we do have too much property crime in this community. A lot of it is related to drug crime. So every community in Iowa, every community in the United States has a drug problem. It's not just Marshalltown. But the, that drug problem drives a lot of criminal activity that we see. So people steal to try to get a little money so they can go out and buy drugs. So, uh, we need to find ways to work with the community to address these issues. And it's going to take a multidisciplinary approach to address the problems of addiction and homelessness and mental health in our community. And we've started to do that with impact. That's a good first step. But, uh, we're, we're going to have to find a way to be more proactive when it comes to addressing drug crimes so we, we can reduce some of our property crimes. And, uh, I have a couple ideas about how we might do that this year and I look forward to, uh, discussing, um, those with you at some point. Uh, we're going to do strategic planning later this year in September. I sent you all an email about that over the weekend. Um, but we're going to put together another two-year plan to, uh, um, make sure that the police department is on the, uh, right path to making sure that our community is safe. And, uh, we involve, uh, not just city staff in that strategic planning process, but we will all, also, uh, invite some community partners and community members to, uh, assist us with that. So, and the last thing that I want to mention as it relates to drug crime, we are seeing a little bit of an uptick when it comes to, uh, uh, issues like fentanyl and heroin and opioid issues. Um, that concerns me, it keeps me awake at night. Um, we haven't seen the problem that some communities in Iowa have seen or experienced, but that is an issue that I'm, I'm very concerned about and it's something that we're monitoring very closely. So we're going to have to make sure that we're taking active steps to address those problems as they come up. Uh, by and large, I think we had a very successful year. I'm very proud of the Marshalltown Police Department and the work our employees put in and, uh, I think you should be proud as well. Uh, the, the officers and the civilian employees work very hard every day to make sure that we have a safe community and they want to be part of the solution, um, with you, working with you and our partners to make Marshalltown the best that it can be. So, having said all that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Want to have any questions?
Sure. Chief, is the fentanyl problem, is that people purposely taking it or is it drugs that are laced where maybe the users don't know what's happening?
Well, it's a little bit of both, but, uh, we're seeing more and more people that are looking for it and they're buying it intentionally and they're bringing it to our community. It's a problem. So.
Anyone else? Yes.
Could I, could I just ask the chief?
You have to come up to the microphone, Deb.
Jim Shaw, 522 North Second Street. I would just like to know how close to fully staffed are you on police officers? You know, are you close to that or are we down three, five, seven?
Uh, we have five police officer positions open right now that we're trying to fill. Um, we have three, uh, applicants that we're processing under conditional offer. Uh, so if that all works out and I should know in the next week or two if it's going to work out, they will go to the academy in August, um, but we'll still be hiring an additional two.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Chief.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on to motions. Item H.
Motion to approve a new Class C retail alcohol license without their service for a Calvin Rocket at 2013 South Center Street.
Move to approve, Your Honor.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Anyone have any questions or comments? Anyone from the crowd? Several call.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Motion passed. On to resolutions.
Resolution 2023-155, approving the preliminary and final plaque for subdivision of Lot 2 of Bennett's Second Edition.
Ira.
Still move, Your Honor, to approve.
I have a motion for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second.
Hello, Hector Hernandez, uh, city planner here, Marshalltown 500 Woodbury Street. So we had, um, are we on resolution 155? Um, Mike? Yeah, okay. So we had a resolution, uh, proposed for, um, for Iowa Avenue and, uh, it was, uh, Bennett's, uh, second, uh, lots, let's see here. So it's like we had a subdivision, uh, requested, a final and preliminary plaque. Um, this was for, uh, a development project here at Iowa Avenue. Um, they were wanting to subdivide just because there was recently, uh, subdivision not too long ago for the Casey's on Iowa, located on Iowa Avenue. So, um, subdivision was required for this, uh, development to occur. Um, let's see here. It's a, the lot split would be, uh, uh, one acre for the north side, which would be, uh, developed and then the remaining, um, lot size would be 1.84 acres on south side and it would be its own, uh, general commercial. Um, and building permit has been requested or submitted for this, uh, northern lot. And, um, and it, as you can see, um, there was attachments for the final plaque and the legal document is, documents for those, um, subdivisions. And that's, and that's going for the goal one and objective one for plan for, uh, construction and new, um, plan for construction, new infrastructure. And this is why I classified that as this. Any questions for that subdivision?
We're basically dividing two, two lots into one?
Yeah.
So one can be developed?
Yes, correct.
And as a, uh, and I would assume that this passed through planning and zoning?
Uh, correct, yeah. There was a, us planning and zoning, um, meeting on the, let's see here, uh, on the 13th of July. So that was, um, approved and if all EA, I think it was four to oh, four oh.
Okay, thank you. Uh, does anyone have any questions or comments of Hector? Anyone from the crowd? Let's have a roll call.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to resolution number two.
Resolution 2023-156, approving the final plaque of Creekside Estates addition in the town of Marshall, Marshall County, Iowa.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
I have a motion for approval?
Second.
I have a second. I believe you're back up, Hector.
So I had, um, uh, final plaques for Creekside. Um, we have received, uh, this also was at the Plan Zoning Commission on July 13th. That was also approved, uh, four to oh. And, um, it has all the information, um, in, included on there. This is just, uh, a proposal, just for review for that final plaque. The subdivision is required for any, um, parcel that's, um, that's, that's divided into more than three, um, parcels and it's currently zoned as mixed use. Uh, this is proposed to have single-family attached dwellings. This, um, phase is developed to include, uh, two outlots for the future developments. Um, and all the documents should be attached on there for the subdivision. And it should, um, also go with, uh, goal one for increasing housing opportunities at all levels for the city council, um, goals.
Okay. So this is the subdivision that's just by, uh, Wayward Social, correct?
Correct, yeah. It's on South Sixth, uh, street, I believe.
The cul- the cul-de-sac that's there?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? Anyone from the public? Let's have a roll call.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Okay. Let's move on to ordinances. Jay?
Public hearing and ordinance 15068, approving the rezoning of 201 East Merrill Hibbs Boulevard, parcel 831811426012, from mixed use to general commercial, first reading.
Okay, I declare this public meeting open at 5:55 PM. Do we have any written comments?
Yes, I do, Your Honor. From Amanda Akala with Alliant Energy, she says, "I'm writing to let you know that I would support the expedited rezoning efforts in support of the VA and the community development and can serve as a tremendous asset to our veterans in the community."
Thank you. Uh, do we have any pub- public comments?
Good evening, uh, mayor and council. Uh, John Hall with the Marshalltown Area Chamber of Commerce, uh, just here to speak, uh, briefly on the, this project. Uh, it's a project we've been engaged with since October when they were awarded from the federal government, uh, the, the project. Uh, they've been engaged with city staff, uh, since, since that time, uh, and the, the rezoning was, uh, not expected to come before you. We were intending to, uh, rework the mixed-use, uh, zoning district with some zoning code updates, uh, that unfortunately, um, have just, uh, gotten delayed, uh, and, and never took place. And so, uh, what we're, what we're here with is, uh, really asking for the rezoning, but also asking for the acceleration of this timeline. Uh, again, this was, uh, not something that the developer intended, uh, not something that we intended to, to be in front of you asking for, uh, but, uh, the timeline that they were presented for the, the code updates, uh, they were expected to be able to pull their, their building permits in, uh, late June, which is when they submitted for their building permits. And, uh, unfortunately, the zoning was not in place to, to meet that need. Uh, obviously, the, the biggest concern would be, uh, compatible uses and, and nearby neighbors. Uh, the zoning up, uh, the zoning, uh, change would not, uh, affect one way or another the actual end use. So both mixed use and general commercial would allow for the same use. Really comes down to, uh, the, the building layout, uh, the lot layout and, and building materials. Uh, McFarland Clinic, uh, just next door would not be permissible under the mixed use it with their new current facility. Uh, they fall under a different zoning classification though, so they, they were permitted. Uh, so this would be, um, if, if they had to go through, uh, a, a regular, uh, zoning, general commercial would be what they'd look for. Uh, and then Walmart, the other neighbor, uh, actually sold property into this development. And so, uh, I think we can say with confidence that both neighbors, uh, or both immediate neighbors are, are supportive of, of this project. So, uh, I'd ask for not only approval on the, the rezoning, but also the additional expedited, uh, uh, timeline on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Okay, can we have staff review?
Hector Hernandez, uh, city planner here, 500 Woodbury Street. So, um, I got this proposal and like, uh, a seconding John Hall, it's like this, we didn't expect this to come to city council, but with the mixed-use district not being, um, set or, or matching these building standards, we would have to look at this rezoning and, like I said, expediting this process just because we've been working for, uh, since October for this development and, and just, um, haven't had an opportunity to look at the, uh, rewriting the mixed-use district. But, um, we're, we're looking at most likely, um, doing some, some kind of rewarding or, um, some, um, change in that, um, district just because these, uh, building standards such as like parking rear and parking, um, would not comply with this type of development here proposed. So, um, I have the memo here, it's like, this, uh, would meet the, uh, first goal for expand and, um, improve the development of the, in the community. Um, uh, this, uh, was in the Plan Zoning Commission meeting on June 29th. We also had a proposal, um, we also had a public hearing set on July 13th for the PNZ Meeting Commission. Uh, they, uh, rec, they also recommended, um, uh, those four members that were present, they recommended that, um, approval for the mixed-use district, um, to be rezoned to a general commercial. Um, like, like I mentioned before, it's like this type of development would not be allowed in this mixed-use district such as the parking standards and building up to the property line. Um, no budget impact. This is, um, zoned, uh, though currently the, the zone, like John mentioned, John Hall mentioned, um, Walmart is currently zoned general commercial on the east parcel, which is, um, McFarland's lot, is currently zoned as a, a public institution, BI. And, um, this, um, this rezoning is, um, was also set for a public hearing, I believe, on today for the city council meeting, the July 24th. And like I said, it was like, we would appreciate if we can expedite this process and, um, um, just, um, approve this process for the rezoning because, um, there is, um, we've been working on this for a long process, but like I said, the mixed-use district doesn't meet this criteria, so we were asking the city council to, um, approve this rezoning.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Hector? Okay. Anything else from the public?
Linda Clark, 306 South Second Avenue. McFarland Clinic happens to be my medical provider and I recently drove out that way to see the new facility. And what I saw was the parking and everything was fine, but it said no outlet. And so my question is, what is the big hurry on getting some of this stuff done? Uh, what's going to happen further to the east where McFarland is since there's no outlet access? And he's asking to push this through? And that's what I'm questioning. It seems like, why are we having to push things through so quickly now all of a sudden? And that's my question. I mean, I drove there because that is my medical provider, but there was no outlet going out. So why are we pushing things through so fast? That's just what I'm asking.
Thank you, Linda. Okay, I'm going to, going to declare this public hearing closed at 6:02 PM and move on to the res, uh, to the ordinance.
I'd approve the, uh, approve the ordinance 15068, Your Honor.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Any last comments? Roll call, please.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Okay. Um, we have one point, uh, 1.1 on this. Motion to waive the second and third reading of ordinance five, 15068, approving the rezoning of 201 East Merrill Hibbs Boulevard, parcel 8318-11-426-012, from mixed use to general commercial. Do I have a motion?
I would move to approve that, Your Honor.
Okay, have a motion to approve?
I would second.
Have a motion and a second? Anything from? Audience? No? Roll call, please.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Moving on.
Ordinance 15069, to amend the code of ordinance to city of Marshalltown, Iowa, Chapter 73 recreational vehicles, to add language for golf cart car regulations, first reading.
Motion to approve?
I'd motion to approve, Your Honor.
Second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Any questions or comments? Anything from the public? Several call.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to ordinance number three.
Ordinance 15070, to amend the code of ordinance to city of Marshalltown, Iowa, Chapter 52 sewers and sewage disposal, to add the right to repair private sewer connections to the sanitary sewer system, first reading.
Move for approval, Your Honor.
Second.
Have a motion and a second?
Good evening, mayor and council. Heather Thomas, Public Works. Um, this ordinance is related to our sanitary sewer utility. Uh, we've had about four instances in the last 18 months where a private building sewer, um, is, has a void in it and it's causing damage to our street. Um, we notify that property owner currently and we ask them to repair it. We've had one success. We've had another building that is actually a joint building sewer between two property owners where one property owner was willing and the other was not, and then we've had one with no response. So what this ordinance amendment request is for is to establish a procedure for us to follow so that the city is able to repair that, so we can repair the street and get it back open to traffic and then go ahead and assess those property owners. it back open to traffic, and then go ahead and assess those property owners. So the process that we would do, we've outlined in our memo, and we would give them a notice. We'd generally give them 60 days to do the repair. We did give us a range of 10 to 60 days. We will always go with 60 days unless it's a more emergent situation. We ask them to repair it. This allows them to work with their homeowner's insurance or if they have a service line warranty so that they can go through that process. If they fail to do so, this would give the city the power to hire a contractor and have it repaired. We would then bill them for it. After 30 days of non-payment, the city would start charging interest. After 90 days, it would go on a list that's eligible to be certified to the county treasurer. At that point, the city clerk would send them another 30 days' notice. So that's our request that we amend our ordinance to allow that process to happen.
Okay, thank you, Heather. Does anyone have any questions? Comments?
Your Honor, if I may.
Go ahead.
Heather, if we pass this, is there a situation out there that is grossly destroying a street and we need to waive the second and third reading on this?
No, we've put patch material in the street at this time, so you're welcome to make that motion, but we don't have an emergent situation.
Anyone else? Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second, correct? Anything from the public? Let's have roll call.
Kel.
Yes.
Lottie Hoff.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Could I make a motion to waive the second and third reading, seeing as that was unanimous, and I believe it will be at the next two readings?
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to waive the second and third reading. Anything from the public? Let's have roll call, please.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Kel.
Yes.
Lottie Hoff.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Okay, we're moving on to discussion items. The discussion, first discussion item is a salary classification study.
Rachel, I've gone ahead and your presentation is showing, and I'm going to turn this over to Jill.
Great, thank you.
Jill Peter Meyer, Human Resource Director. As you can see, we have Rachel here. She's the one, the consultant that worked on our compensation studies, so she's going to give you an overview of the results of that, how they'd conducted the survey, and then after that, we'll talk about next steps. So I'll turn it over to you, Rachel.
Thank you. Good evening. Can you all hear me okay?
Sound clear.
Yep.
Okay, great. My name is Rachel Skaggs. It's a pleasure to be presenting to you tonight the results of the classification and compensation study. A little bit about myself, I am a classification and compensation project manager for Gov. HR and have been with the company for about 10 years. Prior to working with Gov. HR, I spent 10 years in local government management in Illinois, most recently with the city of Princeton, Illinois, as a city manager, and then prior to that, worked for the village of Schaumburg and the village of Montgomery. So I have a short presentation that I'm going to go over, and then we'll have plenty of time for questions, but please stop me as I'm going through it if you have questions at that time, too. So kind of an outline of what we're going to talk about. I'll go over the scope of work, and then I'll go over the job evaluation process that really focuses on the internal equity of the positions and the proposed classification plan. I'll talk about the external market survey that we did, the compensation survey, and the proposed compensation plan. I'll go over our recommendations on implementation of the plan, as well as future administration of the plan, and then we'll have time for questions. So one of the first things that we did was hold study preparation and project meetings to kind of go over the process from beginning to end. Then we focused on determining the comparable communities. We had a meeting with all employees and distributed the materials after that for them to fill out, that kind of went over the process and what we needed from them. And then we completed the job evaluation analysis and put together the job classification system. At the same time that all of that was going on, we were reviewing all of the external market data and the compensation analysis. Right now, we are making a presentation to you on the draft report and the draft findings, and then, once that's all done, we'll finalize the report. So as part of the job evaluation, one of the first things that we did was look at all 60 positions, and we reviewed them using these nine job factors that are listed below to establish internal equity. So we looked at education, the required preparation and training needed to do the job. One thing, before I go through each of these, it's important to note when we do this process, we really look at the position, not the person in the position. So we're evaluating what the requirements are needed to fill that position. The second one is work experience, the years of experience needed to perform the job, decision-making and independent judgment, their responsibility for policy development or implementing policies, planning of work, contact with others, both internally and externally, work of others or supervision exercised, working conditions, both physical demands and hazardous conditions, and then their use of technology or specialized equipment. So each position had filled out a job analysis questionnaire. Those were reviewed by supervisors and department heads, given back to Gov. HR, and then we had a virtual interview with at least one employee in each position. And that's really just to kind of expand upon the information that they shared and learn more about their position, because although we work with communities all the time on this, we know that positions at each city, village, municipality are different. So we really spend that time to get to know what that position is responsible for. And then we put together the classification plan, which again is based on the internal equity, meaning how positions relate to one another in Marshalltown. There were a couple instances where we recommended some new job title changes, and then on table one of the report, you can see the classification plan. There's a total of 15 grades that encompass all 60 of those positions. At the same time that we were doing that internal analysis and review, we also were looking at external market data. And one of the first things that we did before we went out to those communities was establishing a group of comparable communities that are similar to yours. There's a detailed explanation of this in Appendix B, but we really looked at these seven criteria that are listed below: population, median household income, total assessed valuation, property tax revenue, total expenditures, salaries paid and proximity. So we looked at each of those, and the closer a community was to matching yours for each of those numbers, the more points they received. Thus, the community that received the most points is the most comparable. And then we established a cutoff to determine what communities are most comparable. So in this instance, we chose communities that received 80 or more points. You can see all of those communities listed here, and overall, we had a really good response rate. The communities noted on this slide with an asterisk either responded to the salary survey or supplied us with a copy of their pay plan or filled out a PDF of the survey. So we always provide communities with a lot of options to get that information, and we had a good response rate. So again, data is collected through the use of a survey, and we define each position to make sure we're gathering accurate data. Again, we know that some communities might have a job or a job title that does the same thing, but maybe it's a different job title. So that's why we make sure we define each position so that when another community is filling out the survey, they would maybe say, "Oh, we don't have that position titled, but we call it this," and that's the salary information for that position. We also review all of the information that comes in to make sure it's appropriate for the position. And when we're looking at salary data, ranges are the preferred method. So you'll see that we also collect actual data, but when you look at actual data, a lot of things could be tied into that based on, you know, years of service or other factors. So we prefer to use salary ranges when gathering and analyzing the data, but we also have the actual data there, too. In case we don't have enough range data, we can look at that as well. And then all of the salary data that we collected is current for the market. So we've collected this data over the last couple months, so it's current as of now. So after kind of those two parts, both the internal classification piece and then the compensation piece, we put together the proposed compensation plans. In this instance, we have calculated compensation plans at both the 50th and 65th percentile. And I like to explain what that means. So when you look at the 50th percentile, that essentially means you're kind of right in the middle. 50% of those communities are paying more and 50% are paying less. So it's a little different than the average, but it basically puts you right at the middle. When you look at the 65th, that means you're a little above average. So 65% of those communities are paying less and the rest are paying more. And you can see that data on Table 2. So that's kind of how we calculated the rates based on those percentiles of the salaries of the community surveyed. The pay ranges and the pay plans at both the 50th and 65th percentile have also been calculated based on that data, and that's shown in Table 3. So again, overall, all positions are in those 15 grades, and then we have four different bands within those. So we have grades 1 through 7, grades 8 through 10, 13 and 14, and then 15. And that really just, we break up those bands matching the market data. We also put together a defined step increment plan. So that means to get through from the minimum to the maximum of each grade, there's step A through step L. Each step has a 2.5% increase. So for instance, if you are in grade 2, in grade 2, step A, the next year you would be grade 2, step B, and so on, as long as performance and other things are adequate. I'm going to talk about gradation a little bit, and it can be confusing, but all that really means is the difference from one grade to the next. And the gradation is different for each band because that is tied to matching the market as closely as we can. So for instance, grades 1 through 7 have a 10% gradation. What that means is from grade 1 to 2, it's 10% different, 2 to 3, and so on. And again, that's just to match the market, but to be consistent for each of those bands. Grades 8 through 10, it's a 6.5% gradation. So from grade 8 to 9, it's 6.5, 9 to 10, so on. And then for 13 and 14, it's 10% again. Another good thing about having that consistent gradation is to avoid any compression issues between supervisors and staff and knowing what grade they're in. So that's kind of how the proposed compensation plan is put together. We always recommend, when you implement the plan, whenever you choose if you're going to go with the 50th or 65th, anyone that is below the minimum, we do recommend that you bring them to the minimum as soon as possible. Anyone that is kind of within the pay range can be slotted into the new pay plan at the closest step or however you want to do that. And then, I don't think it applies to anyone, but if there was someone who's being paid over the maximum salary, we would never recommend to bring them back down. You just kind of keep them where they are. They could receive bonuses or other things until the range catches up. And then going forward, we want this to be a plan that you can use, you know, for many years down the road. You won't have to do a full study again. So there's a couple things that we've provided you and you can use going forward. So on the classification side, it's important that if positions change, so if maybe you have two part-time positions that become a full-time or a position that takes on additional duties, you can rescore that position and make sure they're still in the right grade for their job. So you can create, adjust, or abolish positions as needed based on the tools we've provided. Also, in addition, we are around for a year or even longer free of charge to help you with any of those since we're doing this plan for you. And then on the compensation side, you want to make sure, you don't need to do a full survey every year, but it's important to just send a quick email out to those comparable communities, see what their most recent increases are, like cost of living increase, and just adjust the ranges annually so that you can stay current with the market depending on what pay percentile you want to be at. And then that last bullet point, again, just goes back to if you do move a position up a grade based on additional responsibilities or anything, you would want to consider pay adjustments for them. So I know that's kind of a lot of information and can be a little overwhelming and confusing. I'd be happy to go back over anything or talk about the draft report as well.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for?
Your Honor, if I may.
Yes.
Rachel, we have a lot of compression currently. Without, I guess, it's my understanding to run different scenarios, it's pretty time-consuming. But if we implement one of the two recommendations, are we going to create a bigger problem moving out of that compression, or are we going to create more compression?
So you definitely shouldn't create more. There's always some instances, depending on what positions you're looking at, where if you factor in overtime or other things, you know, they could be creeping up, but we're really just looking at base salary. And by implementing this structure and knowing the salary range for each grade and where the positions fall and what grade, you should avoid those compression issues.
Anyone else?
Rachel, I guess I have three questions, and maybe Julie can answer them. When we talk about the 50th percentile to the 65th percentile, are those in addition to, so if we did 65th, is it 50th plus 65th, or is that just a delta between the two? So is the 65th the set number on what it would mean to the bottom line?
Yeah, so it's just either or. So the 50th, yeah, is just one option, and the 65th is another option. And I always like to say, so if you would have asked me this question, if you would have said like a year and a half ago, are most people at the 50th? I would have said, yes, a majority of people like to be a payer at the 50th percentile. I think now, given, you know, the economy and issues with recruiting and retaining employees and just, you know, a lot of things that have come the last year or so, a lot more people are kind of being more aggressive and paying at the 60th or 65th percentile just to make sure that they have competitive salaries. But it's completely, you know, up to you where you want to be a payer at and how you want to establish that percentile. We never would recommend anything lower than the 50th, but the 50th is a good baseline.
I may have worded my question maybe not as appropriately. The total amount that's noted for what it would mean to us from a budget perspective to go to the 65th percentile, that is its own bucket, or that is in addition to the 50th? I'm just trying to make sure.
Yeah, it's its own bucket. Yeah, so it wouldn't be in addition. Yes, sorry.
No, all good. So, that's a good question. So why, in this instance, would the clerk be smaller in the larger percentile? 1470 versus 884.
I can answer that, Rachel. It's when we, Rachel talked about putting them on the next step closest to where they're at right now. That person would have fallen on a step that was maybe only a couple hundred dollars difference when the 65th, where when we were in the 50th percentile, putting them on a step, it was a little bit larger. So it looks kind of skewed, but it's just putting them on the next closest step, and the way the steps fall, that's why that was like that.
Yeah, and that's a good point. The first year of implementation with a step is always a little funky because of where everyone's going to be placed, but then going forward, for instance, at this, for that position at the 65th, their range is, you know, they have more opportunity to grow, whereas if you would with the 50th. So it does all balance out, but that first implementation is a little, and then going forward, everyone's increase is at 2.5 for each step. Good question.
So I guess to that, and you kind of mentioned it, but maybe didn't answer the question, how often is, what's recommended from Gov. HR to redo a salary study when you talk about adjustments in what we're doing now? I don't know, when was the last one that we did one?
2008.
2008. So what is the typical timeframe you see amongst maybe other communities as a best practice or otherwise?
Yeah, so we always say every five years, but I typically say if you stay on top of it and update it annually, this could last you a good 10 years. So, you know, if you kind of fall behind and don't update it or look at it annually and make adjustments, and it doesn't have to, again, be a full comprehensive look, but just bringing it up, make sure you're adjusting those ranges to market, accounting for any changes with positions, you know, looking at it once a year and making those changes, it should last you a good five to 10 years until you need a full study again.
And I guess...